County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, March 18th, 2024. Order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Present.
Chairman Jones?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you will, please let's stand together as our county attorney, Mr. Eric Grady, will lead us in prayer. Then I ask you to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
Lord our God, God of all people, Eternal Spirit of the universe, we ask for blessings on this Board of County Commissioners, Craven County, and the United States of America. Keep us strong as a nation, sustain in us a deep sense of justice, incline our hearts to work for the betterment of all, and peace for the human family. Keep alive in us the memory of all those who made ultimate sacrifices for our benefit as a nation. Bless this land with prosperity, teach us to celebrate our differences, and to unite around our common values. Be present with us in our homes, our places of work, and on the way. We thank you, Lord, for this day and the opportunity to serve you by serving others. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning to those of you in attendance today. Thank you for being here, and to those that may be viewing online, we welcome you. I would ask that we would all, please make sure our cell phones are on silence. We would appreciate it this morning. Commissioners, we have, before we approve the agenda, we've got a big day, a regular Commissioners meeting here, and then we will take a recess after this meeting for about 15 minutes to go into a work session for the remainder of the day. So, thank you for allotting that time for today's discussions. You have before you your agenda for the regular session, or any items you desire to pull or add this morning?
I'm making a motion to approve the agenda as is.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. The first item this morning is a presentation. We're honored to have with us Chaplain Jim Dobbs and Executive Director of the Coastal Women's Shelter, Ms. Amanda Delgado. And we're going to invite you both, whichever want to come first speak, however you want to do it, but we welcome you both here today.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for allowing us to come again before the Board. As we promised back a few months ago, that we would come back and give you an update on how we are doing. A little over a year ago, we took on the sexual assault after one of the agencies in town closed, and so we would like to give you a little bit of an update of where we are, as well as some of the exciting things that are going on in the, not only the present, but in the next couple of months. So Amanda has some updated numbers for you, and then we'll give you some excitement of what is yet to come. So Amanda.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here. So, since July, that was officially when we took over sexual assault programming within our agency. Since then, we've seen a total of 25 sexual assault victims within Craven County. Three of those were minors. Each one of them were able to connect with our agency through various referrals, and we were able to get them into therapy services, emergency shelter, or just provide them with some court advocacy or moral support to help them begin their journey to healing. We're not 100% sure the numbers, accurate numbers, that the previous agency held when it came to sexual assault, but us as an agency, that is a huge increase for us. We're talking monetary resources or just resources in general. So through that, we have seen our therapy services almost double. So where we were seeing about 30 clients throughout the whole year, we're almost at 60, and we're not even through the rest of our fiscal year yet. So we know that that's only going to continue to climb from here on out. Another thing that we've been able to do is we are now a co-chair of our Craven County Sexual Assault Response Team with Department of Social Services. And through there, we've been able to build partnerships with local law enforcement, with other victim service agencies, to make sure that when a victim comes forward, they're receiving every possible resource and service available to them through all the agencies across the board. And so we've seen that, we've kind of brought in active cases each month, and we've reviewed that to make sure that no one fell short in what they're supposed to be doing. So it's our way to hold each other accountable for each victim that comes forward, to make sure that they're getting every possible service to meet every need that they have available to them.
And one of the exciting things that we're in the process now is we are under contract for a brand-new building for our agency. For our agency, this will be able to move our offices from Glen Burnie, and then also move our boutique from Neuse Boulevard, and put our offices and the boutique all under one roof. And it will centralize all of our services, be able to streamline our services, as well as provide services in addition. So one of the parts of the new building that is there is a large classroom. So it gives us the opportunity to hold classes not just for our clients, but also for the community, being able to invite our community partners in, our Sheriff's Department, police departments, local other groups, college, and things like that, to not only lead financial classes, but also classes, what is sexual assault? What is domestic violence? How do we help people get new beginnings and things like that? So there are some very exciting things that are happening. While it is not an issue that is readily talked about at the dinner table, it is definitely an issue that needs to be talked about so that we can help address folks, be able to help folks, and be able to support folks. So we thank you very much for the partnerships that we have had, that we've created with the Board, and we hope to continue even greater partnerships with you all and others in the future. And we welcome any questions that you might have.
All right, Commissioner Mitchell? Sorry.
Do you think, do you have a way to estimate the unmet need throughout the county? That's question number one, because y'all are located in New Bern, and it sounds like you are expanding your outreach throughout the community and throughout the other sections of the county. That's question number one, in terms of the estimate for unmet need. And two, how would you describe the need for community education over the issues of domestic violence, sexual assault?
I think one of the areas that what we have found, especially with the other agency having closed, a lot of the numbers that were presented were very much total numbers in terms of counseling and other things, and they were very inflated. So they looked very big, but they were not necessarily the true picture numbers. So I think that the question of finding the unmet need, as trust is being created even more strongly with our agency, more referrals are being made to us. So I think the hard part is with sexual assault and domestic violence, a lot of folks are not wanting to talk about it. However, the unmet need is, as we have created stronger relationships with the Craven County Sheriff, New Bern Police Department, Havelock Police Department, our name is getting much, much more used, and that is creating a greater flow to us. In terms of the second question of being able to have the community, the education, correct? Is that remembering? We are looking at being able to forge even greater partnerships with, say, some of the schools and things to be able to have some extra classes with that. In our new facility, one of the opportunities we'll have is most likely being able to provide counseling services five days a week. Our current counselor is a school counselor. She is looking at retiring and hoping to then be able to come to us five days a week during the daytime. And this, our new facility, will be able to present an office, have an office for her to have that. That also then be able, is able to then give more clientele, if you will, for education opportunities with that. Sir?
Mine is much quicker. Where is the new facility being built?
Our new facility is on Trent Road, Fort?
2403.
2403. So if you go down MLK and you hit Hotel Road, and you take Hotel Road, it dead-ends into Trent.
Yep.
It is right at that dead end, right there. So it is central to not only a lot of our clientele, but it's central to our three clients, our three counties that we serve, in terms of Pamlico, Jones, and Craven County. But it also has very high traffic, so it will help, be very helpful for our boutique, but also helpful for our clients. And if our safe house is full, we are looking at trying to create partnerships with the two hotels that are there, that we would then be able to have a safe place for our clients to be able to go to in an emergency if our shelter, and we've had times where our shelter has been full, and we've had to put clients up at hotels, and then they have immediate access to our services, to our boutique, to our food pantry, to our clothing pantry, those things, so.
So that's the new brick building that was built and then had a "For Sale" sign in front of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Other questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Smith?
You are based in New Bern, and you say you serve Craven, Pamlico, and?
And Jones County.
At Jones. My question is, what percentage of people are you getting from outside the county and far distances in the county? Would the people in Vanceboro, Harlow, and Jones County, how are they reaching you? How do they know how to find you?
So we talk Harlow, you know, Harlow is a very hard community to reach in general with any resource that we have. But I will tell you, over the past six months, we've seen an increase of the outreach efforts out there in Harlow. So last year, Commissioner Hunt oversaw a resource fair at the fire department out in Harlow, and there was a great turnout there. And so our agency was able to pass out all of our information. We're also building our partnerships with the churches down in Havelock to make sure that when folks are reaching out for services through them, the church is handing out our information. So we have tearaway posters at almost, not almost every, but a huge percentage of the churches down there, as well as other agencies down in the Havelock area. I will tell you, a large percentage of the folks that we see, I'm going, about 60%, come from the New Bern area. It's a high-traffic area compared to Harlow, compared to Dover, Cove City, and so we are seeing our larger numbers come from the New Bern area. But we don't, we're not 100% sure just yet if it's because folks aren't receiving the information, or if it's the other, where it's not really a huge issue, which we know that's probably not what it is. But we are building the partnerships, we are building more relationships with folks in the communities. We have largely increased our outreach and awareness over the past year, and we're going to continue to be able to do that.
And I know my wife works for the police department in Havelock, and she is forever handing our cards to the officers to keep in their pockets, so.
You got Jones County?
Yes, we cover Jones and Pamlico, and we've also been able to increase our outreach out there as well.
Thank you.
All right, other questions from Commissioners? Well, on behalf of this Board, we thank you for what you're already doing, but especially again for stepping up and taking on this needed effort that you're doing. This Board, again, appreciates it. We're going to definitely be discussing more, you know, and how we can collaborate with you going forward and supporting you. I would ask you, at some point, if you don't mind, send some of your cards here to the office, and that would help some of us to be able, your materials, to be able to get it out to our respective communities, and they'll get it to us. Staff, you got anything?
I would just say, I've been working past your job, and Amanda?
No, over the last year, and they've got a lot of energy, and they're really tackling a desperate need in our community, and I'm thankful for them and look forward to continue working with them and help them along the way, so.
Thank y'all, appreciate you being here today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item two, Commissioners, is your consent agenda. You have the minutes of the March 4th, 2024, regular session, tax releases and refunds. The Sheriff's Office has retired, Fire and Emergency Services has a budget amendment, and the Health Department has an increase in state funding for cancer control as a budget amendment. Are there any consent agenda items that you desire to pull?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you.
All right, departmental matters. The first item we have is the 340B Pharmacy. Mr. Scott Harrelson, good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
As we come down the home stretch of the fiscal year, I know this is the second time I've been to you this fiscal year for the increase for our 340B Pharmacy. A few things that have been occurring, I think that word of mouth has spread, we're seeing more people come in, we're continuing to get referrals from our emergency room with Medicaid expansion and DSS signing more people up. We are growing our patient base, and one of the things that impacts this greatly is, again, the hepatitis C meds. They are very expensive. Now, we get reimbursed plus some when we provide them, but our cost on those are over $18,000 for one individual. So our finance officer, Ms. Sutton, has put together a request for a budget amendment of $140,000. We do believe this will get us through the fiscal year, and the 340B Pharmacy is profitable, will be profitable for the year, as will the federally qualified health center as a whole. Even with the addition of new staff, with the addition of our staff, generates patients, which also generates revenue.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Harrelson?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment, and I believe that is in the amount of $140,000.
Right.
To increase revenues and expenses in the 340B Pharmacy. Is there any discussion on the motion? Only thing I will say, I, you know, when you first came to us about just some, a few years ago, you know, a governmental body getting into a pharmacy, you know, we were a little bit skeptical, but you had a great vision.
Yes, sir.
In how this could assist the citizens of the county, and I commend you.
Thank you, sir.
For that vision and for the profitability and it being a benefit. I thank you for that. All right, any further discussion? Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Scott.
Thank you for your support, much appreciated.
Oh, good day, sir. All right, next item we have, planning. We have Mr. Chad Strong, and he's got his folks, Mr. Chip Bartlett, whoever wants to come for. Carita, come on, Chip. Good morning to you.
I'm here this morning.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry if I'm distracted by the view. I haven't been here during the daytime since this has been opened up. It looks fantastic. So, good morning, thank you for having me. We have a couple of CDBG items this morning, the first one being the selection of the general contractor for the three reconstructions under your CDBG program. We had a bid opening in February of 2024. We had multiple bidders, four bidders from the region. In this case, we are recommending a contract award to the low bidder in each of the three cases, B&amp;B Construction. They're out of, it's out of Chocowinity in Beaufort County, and we've worked with him for several years, and he can do multiple units at a time, so staff was comfortable recommending all three to the low bidder in this case. The three addresses are 8,000 River Road, Vanceboro, 526 Hyman Road, New Bern, and 765 Up Creek Road in Cove City. Again, that's three reconstructions, which means the existing structure was not cost-effective to try to rehab, so it will be cleared, and new home will be built basically in the same footprint.
All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions from Mr. Bartlett? The only question I would have, and I know it does, but if it's within the budget, you're okay as far as the funds you received?
That is correct, we are within budget.
And how much was that in total that you received, do you remember?
The grant amount would be $750,000.
$750,000, okay. All right, any additional questions? All right, here none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the housing rehabilitation contracts with B&amp;B Construction for these three units that are in your agenda packets. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, all right? And then B.
The next item is related to the same CDBG in our project. In this case, we are looking at the selection of an asbestos inspection service, which is a professional services required under CDBG. Prior to the clearance of any structures, we have to inspect that for asbestos, and of course, if asbestos is found, we have to deal with that specifically according to state guidelines. So we had a request for proposals we put out for asbestos inspection services. We received three proposals from WF Bureau out of Aiden, Enviro Assessments East Incorporated out of Dover, and Keenan Construction and Consulting out of Wilmington. So in all the three of those proposals, we looked at the criteria that was asked that they provide, and as well as rates, and once all those three proposals were reviewed and rated, what ended up coming out was a highest score for Enviro Assessments East. Of course, all three of these firms are certified and have the proper license and insurance, but at the end of the day, after the scoring, we've got a high score and a recommendation for Enviro Assessments East to provide asbestos inspection services as needed for the existing CDBG program.
All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions before we entertain a motion? All right, here none, what's the desire of the Board?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Smith made a second, and it is to approve the asbestos inspection contract with Enviro Assessments East. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, item five is appointments. You have the pending, current, and upcoming. Under pending, Commissioners, are there any nominations that you have for any of these seats? All right, here none, we will move to current. The first one on the current is the Community Child Protection Team. Mr. Farmer has served there, he does not seek reappointment, so we would ask you to take a look at that, and if you have someone that you would desire to serve, please send in an application. Next one would be the Craven County Clean Suite. Madam Clerk, I take that we have two seats there open, correct?
Well, yeah, Dr. Monroe is the school affiliate, and he's seeking reappointment, and then, yes, there are vacant seats.
And then you have the applicant, okay. So we'll handle them one at a time. The first one is a reappointment, Dr. Gregory Monroe, he's affiliated with Craven County Schools. What's the desire of the Board?
I would reappoint.
Okay, we have the nomination of Mr. Monroe, are there additional nominations? Here none, we set by acclamation. Next would be Mr. Clifford Britt, who seeks appointment, I think Commissioner Mark, he lives in your district.
Yeah, I would appoint him, yeah.
Okay, we got nomination of him. Are there additional nominations? All right, here none, we've set by acclamation. Next will be the Voluntary Agriculture District, Mr. Dietrich Kilpatrick, who's serving, he represents District Two. I would ask that he be reappointed. Are there additional nominations from the floor? Here none, we will set by acclamation. All right, you see the upcoming terms expiring, please take note of those. Are there any additional appointments that we missed today, Commissioners? All right, here none, we will now go to County Attorney's Report, Mr. Grady.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. I have two items for your consideration this morning. Both involve county-owned surplus property that we acquired through the tax foreclosure process. The first parcel is an initial offer to purchase for 927 Sampson Street, parcel ID number 8-006-324. We own this jointly with the City of New Bern, which has already given its preliminary approval. Offer amount is $3,000. Past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure were originally $3,086.78, and the tax value of the parcel is $6,000. If the Board is inclined, would be appropriate to make a motion to approve so we can get it out on the upset bid.
Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt a resolution approving transaction authorizing the upset bid process for parcel number 8-006-324. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number two involves 1010 Green Street, which is in the City of New Bern, with a parcel ID number of 8006239, and we do own this parcel jointly with the City of New Bern, which has already given its preliminary approval. I will note, this property was on the Board's prior agenda, and we pulled it because there was some question about the tax values relative to the offer amount and items of that nature, but I'll walk the Board through those issues momentarily. The offer amount is $2,700. The original taxes and cost of foreclosure were $29,437.22, and the tax value of the property is $5,400. I will stop right there because the tax value shown in the agenda packet for the last meeting was $110,100. And after we placed it on the agenda, we took a hard look at it, and the question was basically, why would the county take such a low offer on something that has that kind of value? Your Tax Department investigated the matter, and it was assessed with a mobile home, which is not located on the property. The mobile home is located on adjacent property, and that was the overwhelming value of the $110,000 of tax value. So once you delete the mobile home from the value, the tax value becomes $5,400, which is more in line with what we see with lots in the City of New Bern that are vacant. So I'm glad to answer any questions about how that transpired or was corrected, but otherwise, it would be great for the Board to consider making a motion to give initial approval so we can get this out to upset bids.
So moved.
Okay, we have the motion and a second to adopt a resolution approving transaction authorizing the bid process for parcel number 8-006-239. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, County Manager's Report, Mr. White.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to refer to?
To the work session. Okay. Refer to the work session. Next would be Commissioners' Report. Who'd like to begin today? Commissioner Smith, you want to begin for us down there?
I have nothing to share at this time.
Commissioner Hunt?
I would report that we had a home dedication this previous Friday out in Harlow on Highway 101. A lot of wonderful organization was present, to include Hope Mission, Recovery Alliance, and Craven County staff as well. We had about 100 people in attendance to help this senior citizen couple move back into their home after a fire had displaced them and left them homeless. I would just like to say that when people come together to do good work, great things happen, and this couple's back in their home today because of all of these organizations putting in just a little bit of extra effort to do the right thing, and I want to thank all of them, to include Craven County staff that participated in a big way. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Commissioner Moore?
Yes. Back in 2018, we had a proposal to extend the alcohol law from, to 10 o'clock from 12 o'clock. And it was, Food Lion had asked us to do this to help them as far as their sales, as there are other stores in the county and other places in the county that do serve alcohol at probably Sunday, Saturday, if they have regular dinners that are there. In addition, Fairfield Harbor has also asked that we extended that time. based on the fact that they have a restaurant and are considering building another restaurant where they could serve alcohol after, from 10 o'clock on. I've looked over both of their letters that they sent me. But one is the introduction to our county, the regulations surrounding alcohol sales on Sunday present a unique opportunity for discussion and reconsideration. As it stands, sales are permitted within the certain city and town limits, but not universally across the county. The discrepancy not only affects the business, but also impacts the overall economic dynamics within our community. Number one, equality in sales opportunities within the city limits of New Bern and the town limits of bridged in alcohol sales are allowed as early as 10:00 a.m. on Sunday. However, business outside these jurisdictions are at a disadvantage. This creates an unequal playing field where establishments closer to town centers benefit while others further out loose out of potential revenue. Such discrepancies can hinder the growth and prosperity of business outside the city. Number two, positive social impact. Contrary to concerns about increased alcohol consumption, on Sunday, studies conducted by the National Alcoholic Beverage Control Association indicate a nuisance outcome. While there may be slight uptick on Sunday drinking habits, there is corresponding decrease in alcohol consumption on Friday and Saturdays. This shift in consumption patterns suggests that allowing alcohol sales on Sunday doesn't necessarily lead to overhaul increased alcohol consumption, but rather redistributes it across the weekend. So, I would like to make a motion that we extend the alcohol served on Sunday from 10 o'clock instead of 12 o'clock, based on their letters.
All right, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a second discussion.
I would just like to add that, when we discussed this last time, and it's been a few years, one of the, came to my attention was that if someone's going from, let's say, New Bern to the beach on a Sunday morning, and they would like to pick up a six pack of beer to take with them, they can't stop at the Food Lion in James City because it's not in the city of New Bern. But if they drive another mile or two, they can get off 70 and go into Harris Teeter, which is in the city of New Bern, and there they can buy the beer. So, it is an unequal kind of thing and unfair, I think, to and at that time, the manager, I don't know if it's the same person today, he spoke to me and said, hey, it's not right. You know, he said, we're closer to the city proper than Harris Teeter is, but people can go there to buy, they can't buy it from us. So, it is, it is a complicated and confusing thing. But based on that, I second the motion and support the change.
All right, further discussion?
If I may, usually I'll try to wait till y'all have the opportunity to speak, but I would like to speak to it. I'm very much against this motion. And Tom and I were the only two Commissioners that sat on this board when this was brought before us in 2018. This is a new issue for the rest of you. Denny, with his service on ABC Board, has definitely, you know, had folks, and he just mentioned that, has come to him and addressed it. But when we discussed it the prior board in 2018, we had a public hearing in this very room. And if you go back and look at the minutes, which I did several weeks ago, out of all the people that spoke that night, we had one person that spoke in favor of it. Everybody else here that night spoke in opposition. When it came to a vote, at that time, it was defeated five to two. Our representative now, Steve Tyson, voted against it. He was one of the ones. I voted against it. Tom, at that time, he voted against it. There was two Commissioners that voted for it. The reason that we voted for it was definitely, I believe, for most people, was because of that public hearing and what was said. My issues are a lot differently, and I could go through a list of them. But I'm going to ask you to defeat this today and not to pass this for the main reason, it's already been debated. We debated it. We had a public hearing on it. The public spoke resoundingly in opposition to it. Secondly, I will say, and I won't go no further because I can, but we're spending millions of dollars in this county to fight alcoholism. The sheriff right now could probably tell you how many he might have arrested in the last month due to drinking. I'm not saying that people that drink on Sunday morning are going to get drunk and so forth. But I think it goes against everything that we're trying to do as a board of Commissioners in this county to go and to promote additional times of drinking. Yes, they can go to some of the municipalities and do it. That's fine. But I think we stand apart as a board of Commissioners in this county, in this state, and in this nation for the stand that we have taken on this issue. And so, I ask you to vote against it, to defeat it, that it would die because we've already discussed it the prior board several years ago. I respect my colleague, that he felt like he had to bring it. No hard feelings for that, and I don't want him to have hard feelings for me, for my stand on it. But I will vote against this today. The only other question I will ask, we don't have a resolution before us. By passing what has been announced today, the motion and the second, would initially, I reckon, say that we support it, but would you have to come back with the appropriate resolution at a different time?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. It's technically an ordinance amendment. And, you know, it sounds like a pretty easy change if it passes, but I think the board would like the actual text in front of them before they give approval. All of that said, unless the vote is unanimous today, it has to come back to the board. And that's under 153A dash 45 to adopt an ordinance or take action having the effect of adopting or amending an ordinance. It has to be unanimous when it's first, when the matter is first introduced. Otherwise, it comes back before the board at a subsequent meeting, and then that would be a final approval, if you will. Embedded in that is whether the Commissioners would want another public hearing on this. I think typically, we do that for ordinance amendments, although it's not statutorily required in this instance.
Okay, discussion? All right, here no further discussion. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, I will please ask you to call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Howard?
No.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
No.
All right, do you have anything else? Commissioner Mark?
That's it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that has to come back because that was not unanimous. Do you want to have a public hear? How do you want us to proceed from here?
Your call, Commissioners. I don't think we need a public hearing, being we had a four to three vote.
Okay, so what we would do, staff prepare the resolution, put it on the next agenda as a second consideration of the ordinance change.
I would, I would support that.
Okay, agreed.
Anything else, Commissioner Moore? All right.
I would like-
Yes, ma'am.
I would like further information to know what percentage of people who are needing to drink alcohol so early in the day. Because from my thinking and experience, it seems like that would be a person that might be struggling with alcoholism. So, I have a bit of concern about that. I would not, I know I'm speaking late after the fact, but I would not want to encourage the opportunity for folk who are struggling. Instead, we need to, we might need to get some programs to deal with that situation.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. All right.
I'd like to just say something. I disagree with that on the fact that the person that contacted me from Fairfield Harbor, it was a restaurant, and they have brunches on Sunday. And even though the person is not an alcoholic or a drinker, they like to have a-
Mimosa.
Mimosa or something with their dinner. I don't think it has anything to do with opening it up to other than that.
I am going to speak again. I think we have done an injustice to the citizens of this county today that desired for this not to occur by not having another public hearing. Number one, we've already had one. I said it again. But for us not to allow the public to speak on this, I think most of us that on this board are church-going folk that we submit to a higher calling, but that we also have listened to what our constituents say. That's why Commissioner Mark brought this. But, you know, I just for the life of me, I cannot understand why we want to continue as a nation to give in to what the world offers. We did away with our blue laws. We continue to, are going to continue to encourage drinking. No, it doesn't make a person a bad person, but I think it goes against us and what we're trying to do. And as we talk about spending funds to combat alcoholism in this county, you know, we've got some tough debates as we go forward that we'll continue to spend the millions of dollars that we spend. And then on the other side of it, we say, yes, we're going to expand the time. Any other discussion?
I'll just add, Chairman, like Jason, I grew up in North Carolina. I have no personal objection to people buying alcohol Sunday morning, but I have seen a change in this state for the, just that reverence, that family time that Sunday morning used to represent in this state. So, I've talked to Chairman Jones a few times on issues. I've heard him, I've heard him out, and he makes, there's a certain logic to not giving into that. That's the only reason I voted no. And the second part would be the public hearing. I would like to hear from the public. And if the overwhelming majority want it, I say we change the, change the rule and make it, make it so if there's such a public demand for that.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment since I represent Riverbend, Trent Woods, and a portion of New Bern. I will tell you, most of my citizens do support this, not because they want to get drunk on Sunday morning with it. And I will also say that I have many citizens who do not attend faith meetings on Sunday morning because they attend them on other days of the week for a variety of reasons. What they are looking for is the opportunity to have a mimosa or a Bloody Mary at brunch. I also think that we have a responsibility to businesses in this county, across the county, that they all are operating in a, on a level playing field. So, but my recommendation, we have a work session. We're going to be here all day, is that we table this discussion for right now, come back to it later, and move on with the work session on the board.
Respect that, but I think we're pretty much already, I think the motion has been had. Not to contradict you, but I think the motion's already been settled, and you've given direction to staff, so we will move on. Commissioner Howard, you want to go next?
Yeah, I'm just going to report that I'm pleased to report on our recent softball opening ceremonies that had the honor of attending to represent Craven County as requested by Chairman Jones. And I believe the Commissioner for that district, Danny Booker, I had the privilege of throwing out the first ball for the season, and would like to extend my gratitude for you two asking me to do that. It was a neat event. A lot of young, I won't go over all this report, but there's 180 young ladies that participate in that softball league. Very cool to do. Yes, my softball did go down the center of the home base there. I hadn't touched a softball in 25 years, so I was excited about that. Fifty coaches involved. Not only that, there's a, in the Boys Baseball League, there's 180 boys that participate in that. And then Billy was telling me, six, over 600 soccer players participate in the soccer league over there at this time of the year because I saw them as I was walking out. Just remarkable, the community engagement over there, just in our youth league, sports league. So, thank you for allowing me to do that, and, you know, and just a good reminder of the money and the support we give that and to continue doing that over there because it's really impacting a lot of kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two things to report, and they're both indicative of a return to normalcy. You know, I was elected in 2018, followed by Florence, followed by COVID, and a lot of neat things in this area had to shut down because of the impact of those issues. But two things are coming back online. One, Allies for Cherry Point will be doing a State of the Station event on the 3rd of May. I'd ask my fellow Commissioners to please put that on your calendars. We used to do those. We had to stop due to other events. Now, we're back. And considering the amazing things that are happening in eastern North Carolina with defense, I think that will be of interest. So, again, back to normal. The second one is I had the honor as a Rotarian to present a check to Habitat of Humanity for a new build in Pembroke. The walls are already up-
Yay.
-on Saturday.
Thank you.
But Habitat is looking at moving operations and expanding operations now down to Havelock. There are people down there who need affordable housing. Habitat wants to resume its mission down there. So, I look forward to supporting that, and I look forward to this, to our community supporting Habitat. And that's all, sir.
Thank you. Vice Chair Booker?
Yeah, just one thing. It's time to sign up for the senior games. Those of you who are, excuse me, seniors, there are all kinds of events that you can do, from athletic events to, I don't know, knitting, I guess, or something, or quilting. I don't know what all there is, but there are a whole list of things you can sign up for. It's a neat opportunity to get together with other folks and show off your skills. So, get signed up if you're interested.
Thank you, sir. All right, Commissioners, at this time, we're going to, if there's nothing else to bring before the board, we will take a 15-minute recess to allow staff to get room in order for our work session. Anything else? Not, we'll take recess.